Thank you, council. I appreciate your time. Today, as part of our Public Works business planning, we're going to be doing a series of workshops with you throughout the year. We had one on fleet. So this second one is on our transportation system plan. So we're going to be looking at our transportation and how we master plan and look at what we need to do in for the future. A little differently than we have done in the past where we use the road atlas to kind of designate what roads supposed to be like. But what transition system plan, we're going to do a little bit more in-depth review. The county is growing and the needs of transportation is going to become more important for us. So we want to make sure that we are proactive and addressing those and making sure we have a good master plan moving forward. As just a little fun fact, you know, we have about 2,700 lane miles of roadway. So if we connect them together, it will reach from here all the way to New York. So we do, it's one of our largest assets that we have in the county. And we want to make sure that we do a good job of providing not only maintenance, but also what happens as the area grows and provide some good guidelines for our development committee, for residents, and as and also business community that would like to come to Clark County. So today we have our team and I'll let Rob introduce all the members of the team that we're going to present and how we're going to approach the county's transportation system plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Rob.
Good morning, council. Rob Clug with Public Works. And with me today is Megan Reed, our public information outreach person, along with Gary Albrecht, Michael Salas, and Matt Herman, who are transportation planners. And they are working on the primary meat of this plan. In in general, we have a very high level document that's called the Conference of Plan that deals with land use and transportation on a high level. And then we have county code at the nitty gritty detail level. And the transportation plan is an effort to stitch the two together in a coherent manner to provide for linkages, to integrate in items like the Target Zero Vision Zero Plan, Active Transportation Plan, which is a method to make it so that people don't have to drive. They have options of being able to use transit, bike, walk, et cetera, for their trips. And a lot of other things that we're going through that we want to make sure that there's a clear understanding and connection between the high level and the down in the weeds sort of work. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Matt Herman to start the presentation on the transportation system plan. And we'll take any questions when you have them. I prefer to have a dialogue as opposed to just us presenting in the end, answering questions if that works for the council.
Good morning, council. Matt Herman, I'm a transportation planner with Public Works. Today, we're presenting the transportation systems plan. We started working on this plan in 2020 when it was added to our work program. We had a scheduled work session with you back in April of 2020, but that was canceled due to the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. The original public participation plan, which you'll see today and is included in your handouts, has significantly changed since April to reflect our current state of meetings, remote meetings, virtual open houses, electronic publications, et cetera. Next slide, please. These are the topics that we'll be covering for the work session, our background, our goals and policies comparison. This is our goals and policy comparison. As we go through it, we'll show you how your work ultimately results in the projects that we build. Are we're going to see a version of the proposed public participation plan. You'll see our calendar of our scope of work and then ultimately we'll make a request to you to approve the public participation plan for moving forward. Next slide. So the transportation systems plan takes into account growth and development challenges and opportunities, provides direct guidance on how to build, operate, and maintain Clark County's major roadway network while addressing complementary elements of the larger transportation system, which includes transit, multi-use trails, state highways, and freight railroads that are maintained by other entities. The TSP addresses a diversity of transportation needs while integrating social, economic, environmental, and livability aspirations in our comprehensive plan. Provides a framework for our future transportation decisions and makes strides toward regional and county goals and targets. As you can see on this slide, the goal, the TSP and our transportation work has many different elements that we work on, including the Arturo Atlas, our capital facilities plan, which is our 20-year look as far as our transportation needs. The Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, which is our six-year scheduled improvements. The Transportation Safety Management Plan and the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. In addition to these plans that Clark County maintains, there's other Clark County transportation maintains, there's also other plans that you adopt, including the Stormwater Management Plan, the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan, as well as the Comprehensive Plan that really integrate with how our transportation builds out. The goal of the Transportation Systems Plan is to make it user-friendly for the citizen. As you know, they're involved, they get invited to meetings that you host when you make policy decisions. And then it comes back, they get notified when there's a transportation project by them that might affect their commute. The goal is to bridge that decision-making that you make with the projects to show what happens in the in-between. We do have a saying as far as the Comprehensive Plan that the best transportation plan is a land use plan because land use and transportation are inherently linked and one affects the other. Next slide. We could start with our demographic background. The Washington State Office of Financial Management estimates that Clark County total population in 2020 was 499,200 residents. They further estimated that the population in unincorporated Clark County, which does not include the cities and town of Yakal, was 230,100. In those cities and town, 269,100 residents reside. Please don't confuse these numbers that I gave you with the urban and rural population split. A large margin of the unincorporated population resides in the Vancouver urban growth area. And for comparison, those residents are reside in a total land area for Clark County, which is 656 square miles. So for those residents that live in the Vancouver UGA, if that Vancouver UGA, if that was a city, it would rank number five in population in the state. It's a big population that we serve. Next slide. This slide shows you the breakdown of transportation infrastructure under our jurisdiction. Arterials, at the top row, are streets that serve regional traffic. Collectors connect that regional traffic to commercial, industrial, and residential areas. Local streets serve direct access to that private property. You could see that we have roughly the equivalent miles of roadway in the urban area as we do in the rural area. The major roads that you would identify in the rural area are classified as collectors. While in the urban area, there's a predominance of our roads, our local roads serving residential households. The map on the right shows the average daily volumes with blue denoting lower volume roads and orange highlighted as higher volume roads. Functional classifications describe the roadway characteristics based on those volumes, typical trip lengths, and land that's accessed. There are 200, I'm sorry, 2,231 roadway miles in Clark County. About 63% of those are local roads. And this slide shows you the breakdown of the infrastructure. Next slide. This, these two charts here show you the age profiles in 2015 on the left and the projection of age distribution in 2035. 2035 is chosen because that's the planning horizon for our current comprehensive plan. Females on both charts are shown in the red and males in blue. As you can see on this chart, we're planning on a greater percentage of our population being 65 or older in the future. And this group has time to focus on health and well-being. So they might not use the additional forms of transportation that we see. They might greater utilize sidewalks and for health and socialization purposes. Or they might rely on C-Trans, paratransit, van service for getting to services that they might need. Next slide. So this next slide, we're going to get into trips. And when we talk about trips in this slide, for all general purposes, we're talking about how a person gets from one place to the other. If I were to go from work to, I'm sorry, if I were to go from home to work and then back to home, that would be considered two trips. So when we talk about trips, it's a one-way direction. Okay, the chart on the left shows the purpose of why people are driving compared, comparing 2015 to 2035. The light gray on the bottom of the left-hand chart shows trips that are associated with work to home. The purple shade above that gray shows trips that start or end at home, but that are not associated with work. So this could be like a grocery store going to the doctor's office. Moving up the bar, the charts in the red shows transportation trips not associated with home. So this could be a trip from work to lunch, a trip from the bank to the grocery store, trip from a park to restaurant, et cetera. The next green represents trips associated with schools and colleges. The chart on the right side of this slide shows the 20 and 15, 2015 comparison to the projected 2035 trips that remain in Clark County and trips associated with crossing the Collets or Skamania county lines or going into Oregon. As you can see, the percentage of this forecast does not dramatically increase in change, but the volumes do significantly increase. This chart comes from the RTC's Regional Transportation Plan. Next slide. This pie chart shows the methods that people travel. As you can see, traveling to work, the predominant method is the driving alone. This data does come from 2018. So we would expect the 2020 data to show a pretty significant increase for those working from home. It'll be interesting to see that future data to see if it levels out to this 2018 data or it stays along with our 2020 data to show an increase in working from home. But for all intensive purposes, moving forward, this chart serves as our baseline for future planning. For the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Rob where he will show you how the pandemic has had an influence on our transportation.
And I'm going to apologize in front right now. My, my dogs have been very good and quiet. And just as Matt was finishing his slide, they started getting excited. So I hope they're going to continue being quiet for a little bit. So the county has 39 permanent count stations around the, around the unincorporated area on Arterials. And so we have, this is an example of the volumes that come off of the county's count stations on 78th Street, right near King's Way. It looks like a squiggly bunch of linguine or maybe a little bit of a Rorschach test. But the yellow is the eastbound traffic daily totals. The green, which is harder to see, is the westbound daily total traffics crossing that point. And the, the up and down that you see is the week-by-week flow, Monday through Friday are the high numbers, and then they drop down on Saturday and Sunday and come back up on the following Monday through Friday. So at the far left, what we're seeing is that that particular section of road was typically having around 11,000 vehicles per day, both directions, each direction. So about 22,000 cars a day until the pandemic hit in March, where the traffic volumes dropped to about 50% of what they were just before the pandemic and stay-at-home order started. And then over the course of the spring and summer, they increased and stayed relatively steady through the end of the year. And there's a little variation that occurs for holidays and other things like that. The, the point of this is that this is pretty typical of what we're seeing at almost all of our count stations around the county. This is also typical with what we're seeing for national trends. It's also typical for what the DOT is showing on the freeways, that we had a certain volume of traffic on the roads per day and we're currently at about 80%, 75 or 80% of the volumes who were pre-pandemic. The, the one thing I'd like to point out is this is typical. There are some, there are some locations that are a little unusual. For example, on 134th Street out by WSU, the volumes dropped to 50, 60% of the normal traffic with the pandemic. And because WSU is not back in session yet, they've stayed about that same level because WSU is such an influencer of our transportation network in the 134th corridor. So happy to talk in as much detail as you'd like about this. If you don't have any questions, we can go back to Matt with the presentation.
Questions, anyone? Ken?
Right. As we're progressing, the TSP will be monitoring these issues because they will directly affect our transportation system. We've recently made updates to our code to increase the ability to build ADUs, cash developments. And community planning is currently undergoing a housing study for which you recently approved members to the advisory committee. We're monitoring our current developments to see if these sorts of housing are built. We're closely watching commercial lands to see if the lands are being built or changed to residential lands. We're monitoring the state's population projections. We're working with city jurisdictions as well as WashDOT to coordinate our transportation system so that residents don't have to worry about whose jurisdiction is responsible for the road that they're driving on. Next update of comprehensive plan will have a huge impact to our transportation needs for future growth. And finally, we'll be monitoring plans brought forward by RTC to assess regionally significant projects impacts on Clark County's transportation system. Next slide. So the following three slides are important. They're an attempt to show you how the corresponding policies locally, regionally, and statewide help position Clark County for success when we develop our transportation system. Here you see a chart showing Clark County's comprehensive plan policies as they relate to transportation. The regional transportation policies, state transportation plan policies, and national transportation goals that are found in the Code of Federal Regulations. The columns show various goals or policy topics with a corresponding check mark that indicates the government level of which it corresponds. Our success at capturing state and federal grants to leverage our local dollars, start with your policy decisions. When Clark County is able to set meaningful transportation direction and build the programs, they score well with RTC's funding solicitations because they meet these multiple goals and policies in other jurisdictions. Next slide. So yeah, Clark County's transportation goals also match with the Transportation Improvement Program or TIP evaluation priority. The TIP ranking and evaluation of capital projects is designed to provide objective criteria to evaluate the ranking of those projects. The system recognizes safety, mobility, and future development potential as important considerations in the ranking of projects. Clark County policies also play a role in projects that get moved from that 20-year CFP or Capital Facilities Plan into the six-year Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. The council sets these priorities of the goals in the TIP evaluation. And each project in the CFP or 20-year plan is ranked according to this priority. Obviously, projects that meet multiple goals rank highly when they do meet the safety project or safety and other considerations. Safety projects are our number one priority, and this is consistent across all local, state, and federal agencies. We want to keep our public safe when they're driving. It is paramount in our ability to leverage goals. Economic development is our number two goal for supporting our land use plan and growth. Financial viability, it's kind of confusing, but that is our ability to leverage multiple grants. So when a project can meet multiple goals on this matrix, they, that financial viability goes up because they're able to leverage those multiple grants. Next slide. Sure.
While you're, while you're talking about, you know, economic development being a part of the criteria, back on slide 10, seems to me that you were talking a little bit about, you know, coordinating and well, maybe it wasn't 10. Something you said about, no, okay, it must have been 10, sorry. But something you said in there just kind of triggered something in my mind about an issue that we had come up just recently where WashDOT does not have right-of-way for a turn lane in order for us to be able to develop something on a commercial property. And I guess, you know, if economic development, how, how do we, how do we work with that kind of thing? How do we work with WashDOT and have, and convince them of our goals as well in being able to create, you know, a place where we can grow economically also because of our, because of the commercial development that we have, et cetera. How do we, how do we address that? What's the best way to do that?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're talking about. I, I think that's in reference to SR503 and the development that's adjacent to that. Our coordination with WashDOT occurs early and often, especially in our comprehensive plan. When we expand our urban growth boundaries and change land from urban, from rural to urban, it dramatically shifts transportation significantly. Lee, the, when we expand our UGAs that are adjacent to state routes, it puts significant pressure on the state. The state manages that road, but it does not manage the land that's adjacent to the road. So it takes a significant amount of coordination with WashDOT to say, this is how we're growing. This is where we're growing. We want to get your insight on where your difficulty lies in the future. And we try to mitigate the problems that they forecast on the road as part of our growth.
Let me ask you this question. If there would be a situation where we had an opportunity to really have a good commercial development, I'm not even, you know, it, you know, leave the other one aside on 503, although keep it in mind. But if we really had something big coming and WashDOT didn't have the right-of-way and that's kind of their answer, we don't have the right-of-way for an extra turn lane and we're just forget it, keep, stop asking us. Is there ever a time where a county can in some way partner with the state to acquire that right-of-way in order to move forward with some plan? Whether it would be from, let's say, the, let's say, the development of this commercial property. What if the developer or the person that's, you know, wants to go into this space says, I'll, I'll give X number of dollars to go toward purchasing the right of for a turn lane. Either to the county or, you know, I would think go through the county because we would be kind of managing that whole development project. But does that ever happen? Can we ever do that?
So I think I can add something to that one. So that's a great question, counselor. I think that's something we're going to be working, trying to make it a little bit easier to do as well for the public, private ownership. We have great examples that Skyview Station, that I think we were able to work with them and get the project moving forward. And one I think that we're going to be working with Kathleen and her team and also the community development team is the ability for some of these commercial developers to come and talk to us ahead of time and not having to actually start up, or you got to do this pre-app and have that kind of pre-pre-app discussion with them. Say, what are you trying to do? What are your goals? What are your schedules? And how we can become a partner with ENR to move this project forward? And if we need to get involved, WashDOT or other jurisdiction, maybe it impacts like City of Vancouver, maybe another cities that we can help kind of move that forward instead of just being, make it too bureaucratic of, well, you go solve that problem. So we can be with them because there's the benefit. We, we need to understand that when there's commercial development, it brings tax dollars and brings, generates other kinds of activities in the county. We benefit from that. So we want to be, and one of the most challenging part of development is transportation. It's the most expensive part of development is transportation. A lot of times it's additional money that they don't want to spend. So how are we going to be able to help them to get to that point where that's their success and also benefits the county? So I think that's something as part of our work plan, we're going to continue to work on that one and find ways. And, and we have a good, couple of good examples that recently happened at Skyview and also the development of Sunny East where we built the signal. So we're going to build on those and continue to make sure that everybody's successful.
Thank you. I'm sorry about this slide. Go ahead and let whomever is controlling that know where you are, man.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can I, can I just a little bit more? This is Rob. The, the challenge that we have is that our rules are different than the state rules because of the way the state legislature has laid things out. And so I understand what you're asking. And it gets, it gets one of these, it gets into kind of a lot of rabbit holes. You can go down to all the possibilities, whether it's onsite improvements or not onsite improvements, whether it's on the state route, et cetera. We've had some conversations with the DOT recently and the, the conversation was about how do we set up roundabout corridors and integrate with the DOT? And the DOT said, well, we can't require right-of-way dedication if we're not building it right now. But after talking to the DOT for a little bit, they said, there may be a way around it. We just have to figure out how to do it. So what we need to do is we need to be able to identify these specific situations like you're talking about and say, what can we do within the rules that were given? And how can we move forward? And hopefully everyone understands for everyone's benefit. But we do have laws that we need to follow and the right, wrong, or different, the state has a different set of rules than we do.
Appreciate that.
And I think for all intensive purposes, we want to recognize the reality that our citizens are the state citizens and they all travel on the same roads. And we're providing the public with transportation transportation system for them to get to point A to point B. And it doesn't matter where they reside, but the transportation system is necessary for all to get around. Can you move on to slide 13, Rebecca? So here's a historical list of our top projects that ranked in the Transportation Improvement Program. Many of these projects, especially the 119th Street Corridor, were such big projects and several stages that took multiple years to complete. But as you can see, top project every year is mainly a safety project. If it's not a safety project, it's an economic development project that implements the comprehensive plan. So you can see how your policies that you set in the comprehensive plan end up in a transportation project that's built. Next slide. As we move forward with the TSP, we're going to be doing a large public outreach campaign. Our public outreach was, like I said earlier, originally drafted in favor of 2020, but the face that those public meetings have drastically changed since then. These are the goals that we hope to accomplish during our public outreach. Includes an inclusive process that allows wide involvement in many diverse Clark County communities. We hope to have multiple outlets for people to comment, get questions answered, have their voice heard. In addition, we want to hear from subject matter experts that are affected by transportation in their jobs, whether this is developing land, hauling freight, or providing transportation as a social service. Our public involvement plan will also maintain consistency with the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan as well as the Title VI and Environmental Justice Rules and Regulations. Next slide. For this slide and the next, I want to turn it over to Megan Reed, our Public Works Communication Specialist, to talk about the proposed public participation plan.
Good morning, councillors. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you. I know that I have come before this board in other capacities before, but this is my first time coming to you in this capacity. So I'm very grateful for the opportunity to share with you some of our ideologies behind public information, outreach, and participation for public works. So for the Transportation Systems Plan, the Public Participation Plan, accessible participation for all is is really one of our most important goals. Our plan will provide opportunity for public participation, not just because it's important to us as a fundamental belief in public works, but also in compliance with RCWs that govern what we do. The outreach plan will support environmental justice, Black Indigenous people of color communities, traditionally underrepresented communities in Clark County, while also being in compliance with the Title VI Plan and the State Environmental Protection Act Plan. We will host public meetings. Hopefully, we would be more than happy to host those in person. We're really pressing our fingers that we'll be able to get back out in the community and meet people face to face soon. If not, we have plans to do digital open houses and digital outreach, which certainly does present challenges, but we've been able to kind of maneuver around that over the last almost year that we've been dealing with the pandemic. Those would also be broadcast on CBTV, so people could re-watch them at any time to stay informed. We have a robust digital media program here in Public Works. That includes posting all of the information on our social media channels, also our project website. We do quite a bit of digital marketing and advertising. We create marketing plans for all of our outreach projects and do some paid advertising, not only on socials, but on things like Google Ads and YouTube as well. We utilize mailers and media. That's important because as part of environmental justice, not everybody has access to web-based meetings or to web-based information. So ensuring that we can get that information to all of our community regardless of ability to access the internet is extremely important. Matt will share with you a little bit later about the Sounding Board Plan, but we do plan to have a sounding board that will have input on the transportation system plan. We'll host interest group meetings, accept written comments, and there will also be an aspect of jurisdictional and tribal coordination. Next slide, please. So as I'm sure you know, one of the most important parts of any public outreach plan is clearly defining your audience and identifying your stakeholders. For us, that would be the general public, the residents of Clark County, the environmental community, the business and development community, social services, Native American tribes indigenous to Clark County, cities, and federal and state government agencies. Are there any questions about the public outreach plan?
Any questions? Don't see any. Thank you, Megan.
Next slide, please. So with the public participation plan, we want to have a TSP-specific sounding board. We're calling this a sounding board because in your traditional advisory committee sets, advisory committees are ongoing. Sounding board in our purposes is specifically for the TSP. We want to be able to leverage some of the advisory board members that you currently have. So we're proposing in our public participation plan, a sounding board group that consists of a representative from the Bike and Ped Committee, representative from the Commission on Aging Committee, Planning Commission Representative, representative from D, a representative from the Development Disabilities Advisory Board, Railroad Advisory Board staff, and staff from the Regional Transportation Council. Next slide. This is our proposed timeline and our scope of work as we're working through it. We got to start on the project back in 2020 when we put a large amount of our effort into the transportation analysis. We want to go through and do some more work on the performance measures. Currently, Clark County measures congestion on our street segments as a volume-to-capacity ratio and in the intersections for a level of service standard. We want to take an in-depth look at those performance measures to see if they adequately measure congestion in Clark County today. We want to take a look at how that multimodal transportation system works with one another, and if those connections are made, we'll develop solutions based on the needs that we identify, develop funding strategies for funding those improvements, whether it's with our traditional funding mechanisms or other funding strategies that we can glean from other jurisdictions across the nation. We'll also want to do an equity and inclusion analysis to see if all of our communities are served equally. Are we want to obviously get community feedback on our strategy development? And then ultimately, we'll come back around June of next year for the adoption. I believe the next slide concludes our presentation. What we want to request of you next is your approval of the Transportation Systems Plan, Public Involvement Plan in order to move forward and engage the public. I'll be happy to take any questions if you have it.
Are there questions? Before we make any approvals, Gary?
Well, I have more comments than questions, but it does end ultimately with a question. So it's 2021. Yeah, essentially, a new start on a new year with a new council. One of the things I think there's a huge disconnect in this entire briefing that impacts everything is concurrency and the failure to recognize that the greater Portland metropolitan area, all the transportation that goes back and forth between Southwest Washington to Oregon for the daily commute. We continue to focus on maximizing the I-5 corridor much to the chagrin of a lot of Southwest Washington citizenry. And there's there's one fear out there that if we talk about a third corridor now, then we distract or take away from the I-5 corridor discussion. I think just the opposite is true. I think there's a lot of angst out there, and it's well-understood and true angst regarding the congestion and the fallibility of the I-5 corridor to weather accidents, natural calamity. We just don't have any resiliency in the system because of congestion and usage that is there now. If we were actively planning rights-of-way, these major arterials for a third quarter, you would take away all of that angst, and we would be doing what we should have been doing all along. And I'm I'm talking about a bypass from basically the Salem area up to Longview. Mainly, my view would be in the eastern corridor because of terrain, existing development. But if you just take a snapshot, a 30,000 view of Portland and our Vancouver comp plan, our UGA right now, we need that third quarter in place. Rights-of-way will be almost impossible to get if we wait too much longer. It's already been made so much harder because this has been, the planning has been delayed for so long. So we're we're missing out on concurrency in that sense, and every planning policy initiative from carbon footprints to health and safety in our community, every factor is impacted by the notion of improving a third and producing a third corridor. So I want to move to that. I want to inform this this council on how we move forward to accept that we are in a a two to three million plus and growing area in Southwest Washington with Porton right next door, and we need to plan on it. You know, we we need to connect our ports for freight and mobility. We need to provide a real bypass for people who aren't commuting back and forth between downtown Portland and Southwest Washington. So how do we do that? I was hoping from previous sessions that we've had, that we had something on the shelf with all the work and visioning that's been done previously, that there had been some real work in identifying where this roadwork network needs to be, where it needs to connect over the Colombian to Oregon below us. You know, we are just behind the time. So it's I'm not looking out 10 or 20 years for more visioning. I think we're already way behind on this singular issue, and it impacts everything else, and we're not talking about it. How do we move forward? If we have three votes on the council to do this work, what needs to be done next so that we can actually move forward on planning? And the land use with our next, perhaps the UGA will move around a little bit, maybe not, but just with it as it exists now, what is the next step to do the work today that should have been done 10 years ago?
Thank you for that question, councillor. For that, I'll defer to Ahmad or Rob to take that question on.
So I'll kind of wade into it. So go ahead, Rob. I I understand your concern. The what you're talking about is Clark County is a member of the need to find a solution that you're talking about. So it becomes a by-state, multiple-county, multiple-jurisdiction solution that we have to agree upon how we're going to make that connection. And as a as I understand the situation, if there was a new interstate route, it would not be a county facility. It would be a state facility, and it would be something that the legislatures for Oregon and Washington would have to start looking at and directing the DOTs to look at. Now, we can facilitate that, but it's it's just having our plan alone. Excuse me. Just having our plan alone doesn't solve the problem that we have to go somewhere else. I apologize. I'm going to go mute here for a sec. So Mark, please.
This emphasis added, but what I'm hearing is that maybe we have no ability other than maybe passing a resolution to inform the state, the RTC, and others that we, at least as a political body, the council, support earnest work in this regard. Maybe that's our only route at this point.
I I think that is a route. I don't know that that's the only route. And I I'd be, I think it's it's something that it, what we're talking about in this particular case right here is the Transportation System Plan for Clark County. That doesn't mean that we you support or could be involved with. It's just a matter of what is the best and most efficient way to be able to move forward should the all the jurisdictions choose to do that.
Yeah, yes. The only thing I would disagree with what you just said, Rob, is that it's this what you just briefed is a Clark County transportation plan, and it has nothing to do with the third corridor. I think it has everything to do with the third corridor when you talk about strategic road networks.
I I must have misspoke because that was not my intent. That what what you're asking about is a larger perspective of a comprehensive plan, arterial atlas, land use analysis that is much more of a policy-driven, high-level discussion that eventually will filter down to the nuts and bolts. But that that high-level discussion is, in in my view, which is one view, is something that is more of a comprehensive plan idea because you're looking at what the future is. And Ahmad, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm I'm I'm.
I know you're right on, Rob, and I thank you for that question, councillor. I think the RTS will be a really good supplement to this request and showing that how our transportation system in terms of demand is increasing. So how are we going to manage that? Because I think, and just look at our growth rate, and I agree, councillor, that it needs some additional attention on transition, a larger perspective. So I think those charts that Matt showed earlier in terms of the demand and our transportation, the growth and population that continue to drive, those are a good supplemental information that that maybe we do have the discussion larger with the state and other county and by-state discussion that that needs to be part of the larger discussion, and we'll be there trying to support that idea and provide more of the data so that at least gets some additional attention or additional analysis so that that could become part of the discussion. But we we want to be there and support that idea.
Yeah, and and I'm going to just step in for one second here because Gary, what I heard Rob say was not that this wasn't, you know, part of this plan. Actually, I I think you misheard what he said because I was listening closely. And in fact, really, this is the first time, you know, all of a sudden I have this aha moment that, of course, it's it's state, it would be WashDOT and and Oregon DOT that would have to, you know, this would be their corridor. It's a by-state corridor. And so what And so what that says to me is, we also need to talk to our delegation about this. And I think it probably, if this really is the will of the council, and I agree that we, if nothing else, the planning, I mean, putting a line on a map is really important so that as development happens, we're not costing the state. For instance, if the state builds a corridor and we've developed over it, well, they'll say it's impossible, you know, because it's too costly. So planning does have to happen. And maybe the first step is one, speak to our delegation. Two, there should be a resolution of some kind. And then RTC has to be, has to hear from us as a county, the entire council saying, we really want you to look at this because RTC is regional and it does involve the state of Oregon as well. So all of those things have to come into play, I believe. But really, I thank you, Rob, for kind of for the explanation that you gave because I've been thinking, why don't we put this on? Why don't we draw this on? But you're right, it's a state road. So, and just like we, you know, the DOT, Washdott is telling us they don't have a turn lane on 503, they don't have the right of way for that, so we can't develop that commercially. We need to work with them and talk with them about, you know, they can tell us all day long they don't have the money, okay? We understand that. We're not talking about the money right now to build. We're talking about where do we put this, where it makes the most sense so that on the map it can appear and people don't develop around it. So, or develop in the right way around that. And they may develop around it, but not on top of it, so to speak. So.
I think what you just said is perfectly stated and good discussion. I just want to add one point because you and Rob, I think, never mentioned it. This is a strategic corridor from Mexico to Canada. And so the federal government has an interest in this as well, as a national asset.
It's true that I-5 is, but this would be, this maybe could be an outer belt or something for connecting this Interstate 5, you know. But I agree, let's talk to the feds too. I'm all for that.
So, councilors, I'm not, I agree, I understand what you're saying. Ultimately, this is going to cost so much money that the feds are going to have to be very involved to acquire and build this. This is huge. And so I understand what you're saying. And from the county's perspective, from transportation's perspective, we're not opposed to it. We just need to understand what it means for our needs and how we can move forward, given what we have. Because one of the things that jumps out immediately to me is our tip, our six-year program is pretty much locked in for what we're building right now. If we're talking about building a new infrastructure or working towards building a new infrastructure for freeway, east or west or somewhere through the county, we're going to have to build the roadway network to get to that and facilitate the land use that will come along and the changes in the traffic that will occur because now there's a new way to go. So there is a county perspective of it, but we have to understand that the states and the interstate and the feds would be willing to move forward also.
And councillor, this is Matt Herman. If you recall, when the I-5 bridge replacement got restarted, that started with a series of resolutions from local jurisdictions to the state. It seems that this would be on that same track in order to move forward.
Very good. Okay, let's hopefully, are there any questions about what we have seen in this presentation from the council before we move to approve the public involvement plan?
Yes, I had a question.
Councillor.
I'm hoping Megan and Matt, maybe if you could talk a bit about if and how you'll interact with or involve the neighborhood associations?
Yes, absolutely. So as you know, the county is extremely fortunate to have Mary Lee McCall on staff. Mary Lee and I work extremely closely. And another thing that has been really sad about the pandemic is that I would go to all of the neighborhood association meetings with her in public. And so I've developed a really good working relationship with the neighborhood associations with the help of Mary Lee, and this would certainly be an issue that we would bring to them as well.
Great, thank you. I know that you do a lot with presentations and letting neighborhoods know about things that are coming up and would love to see them be able to, you know, perhaps be one of these interest groups that you meet with so they can give input on the front end as well. I did have one other procedural question for county manager, I think. Since this is a work session, would we be approving this today or approving moving it forward to a public meeting agenda? Just a question.
I would actually have to defer part of that to legal. You can approve the direction in which they're taking. I don't know if the actual approval of moving forward with the public participation plan would require council approval. I think the general direction might be okay today, but if Taylor can weigh in.
I think that's right. Typically, this is Taylor Hobbit. During these work sessions, council would indicate that it's approval, it's approving of the plan and it would be moved forward for a vote at a regular meeting, whether it be council time, which will follow this work session. Couldn't happen today, I should clarify, but put on the agenda for a future public meeting for formal approval.
This is Chris Cook. And I would suggest that it might be best to have a resolution that approves the plan and that could be written up and presented at council time, I believe, though probably not today, or at a public hearing.
Okay, let's just give the word then if it is, if the council is in agreement that we have a resolution of some form written up so that we can approve it formally to move forward. Is that, without objection? Okay, without objection, we will do that, move that forward, create a resolution so that we can approve of the public involvement plan.
Thank you, councillor.
I thought councillor Lennox's point was well-taken. I don't know that a resolution is necessary, but do we, so we don't need to even vote on approving the plan, which, I mean, I'd make a motion to approve the plan as just presented.
Apparently not. We're going to do this either at a council time or at a hearing. This is kind of new to me, but because I think you've always given direction to go ahead before. But if it's necessary that we have to have a formal motion and a vote, we'll do that. So without objection, once again, we'll ask Public Works to create some sort of, or Chris or whoever does it, make a, you know, draw up a resolution for us to approve, to move forward. There are no objections. Is that the extent of your presentation today?
Yes, thank you so much, councillor.
Thank you all. We appreciate it and we'll see you when we approve the resolution.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
We're going to go into council time, but I'm going to give a five-minute break in between council time and this work session. So I will see you in five minutes, which will be about 11:24.
Can we just stay on this web-based? Thank you.
Yes, we do.